Lord, amen. How have you done? That he would come, that I would come. Honor, that he is made. The best society, our daily bread. And forgive us, God, first class. We definitely will be available in the first place. And we live as long as two generations. Since then, there's a real thing. And I'm beginning to power. And we'll work for ever. Amen.
I pray it delays us through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson, if you call, roll please.
Philip Ball.
Here.
Kevin Gordon.
Here.
Lucas Corrigan.
Here.
Ronnie Corrigan.
Here.
Alan Farmer.
Here.
Bo Green.
Here.
Doug Hughes.
Here.
Doc Maseville.
Here.
Gary Mills.
Here.
Motion to enter reports, and they were enclosed.
Are you waiting?
Say.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Motion to enter list of city bills paid.
So what?
Got first and second. Any questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Just on the small internet solutions. Were we?
Right now, we're still paying for them.
Okay.
I called Karen and asked her to please get up with me. I let her know that our scheduling had just got sort of hectic. We didn't.
Okay.
And to get up with me, we needed to try to get something going since we could.
I know.
Okay. Well, I called Monday.
Okay. I'll give that for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any others? If you call, roll please.
Philip Ball.
Aye.
Kevin Gordon.
Aye.
Lucas Corrigan.
Aye.
Ronnie Corrigan.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Doc Maseville.
Aye.
Next approval of minutes, regular meeting held Tuesday, May 21st, in the year 2013. Enclosed.
Aye. So what?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion approved. Next is approval of minutes, a special call meeting held Tuesday, June 4th, 2013. It's enclosed.
I have to make an adjustment on that, please.
Okay.
It's not in minutes, but at that time, I stated that I had requested some information on the budget, but I did not yet. And I also requested that I would give at that time. I think that Bo Green asked for some information. I still have not received it, but that's not, that's not what I'm talking about now. Right now, it was not mentioned that in that meeting, I requested budget information, but not to give it to me before the meeting.
I'd like that added, please.
If you have that added, please. And I'd like to add one thing, that actually, we had called, it was like after 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon before, and the budget was sent. So if we're going to correct it, let's correct it with all information involved.
It was requested on a Thursday, and the meeting was on a Tuesday. And it wasn't there. And then it was re-
Request on Monday, I thought you said, too. Request on Monday for a Monday meeting.
Tuesday meeting.
For Tuesday. And the budget was inside. I realize you didn't realize it, but it was sitting there. And you requested the checks, which is not an open account. And we did give them at the meeting last week.
I said I wanted, I said I wanted amounts left over in each department's budget. The amounts left over at the end of the year in each department's budget is what I requested. And I believe Bo said he requested that also.
Yeah, and she actually gave it to us at our finance committee meeting last week.
I wasn't that far.
Yeah, we did request it.
You weren't notified as a meeting?
I wasn't notified that you had the information.
Oh. Well, that's what we said that night. We have, that's what we said at the meeting.
No, no, you didn't.
Okay. We can see here are do's and don'ts, but I'm sure we have.
Well, if we're going to do and don't, I requested it before the meeting. I didn't get it. I requested it at the meeting. A week later, I still didn't have it. Now, I know that you and Bo both knew I wanted this. This was delivered to me on Friday for tonight's meeting.
I didn't realize, but I do apologize. I forgot you were the only one that didn't make it to the finance meeting.
I couldn't at that time.
Yeah, I understand. I heard you for so long.
And this time, I'm going to say right now, I don't have time to study this and vote. So I called the city attorney and asked if this information was supposed to be available to me. And I discovered, yes, it was. I also discovered, Mayor, that you called the city attorney about the same question.
Through there?
Yeah. And I'm wondering, when all of us know this is public information, and I'm both, I'm also on the council, I'm also on the finance committee, why would you ask the city attorney?
Because you asked. Let's get back to what's the truth for a change. You asked for what was in the accounts, is what you asked for.
I said-
I cannot give account information. You were told that. I told you I would have her go ahead and give department information.
If you want to go by truth, you said you would not give me the account numbers, and I said that is not what I wanted. I didn't want account numbers. I'm not auditing the city.
But that's what you asked her for?
No, it's not.
Okay.
I asked for the amounts left over this year in this budget for the past year. How much is left over in street? How much is left over in administrative? That's all I asked for, and it's been three weeks until this day, I have. Now, I don't know what the reason is, and I'm not even going to question it, but I know what it looks like.
Well, whoever you asked to ask the clerk, because I don't think you called the clerk directly.
I called the assistant clerk.
It got skewered somewhere in the thing, because they also thought you were coming in 4:00 to pick it up.
Without telling me to come get it.
Well, but no one knew that. She had given the clerk that information also, Gary. But you had had this on Friday, and like I say, waited till Monday afternoon. When you asked me about it, I explained to you that the way it was brought to me is you wanted to know what was in each account, and I told you I couldn't do it by accounts. I'd have to do it by departments, because accounts is something we can't put out.
That's what I wanted, was the department.
Well, I understand that, after I told you I could do it that way, that's when you asked me about it.
But I'm having trouble with the fact that I called the deputy clerk. Deputy clerk called the clerk, called you. You called someone else, yes, exactly.
No.
Did Tammy call you?
The clerk called you to tell me?
No, not you. Did Tammy call you, Sammy?
Sammy called me and left me a message because I was-
Did you call the mayor?
Did I call the mayor?
With that information?
I always check with the mayor because the mayor is my boss.
Mayor, did you call Jeff Sharp?
And before I leave anything out in this office, I'll just-
No, I called Jeff Sharp to ask him to please call you, because there's confusion in information, and he called you and said, he explained to you that the budget was in the front of the package, the old budget, now.
And I told him I should.
And you, of course, told me that night that, no, he did not. That's a lie. And of course, that's not correct either.
Well, now, what's a lie?
You said he didn't tell you the budget was in the front.
No, he did, but he didn't give me the information about the holdovers in each department.
Great. Because until we had a chance to put them together, we weren't passing that on.
After all that, two weeks later, you called the city attorney and said, do I have to give them the information?
No, I didn't. See, you're, once again, it was just two weeks ago. You requested it yesterday, Gary.
Yesterday?
Two weeks ago yesterday, you requested it. So no, we didn't wait two weeks.
Well-
I'm sorry you're confused, but let's time we move on.
I'm not confused.
Approval of minutes, a special call. We had first and second. I'm asking all in favor?
Do we need another motion since he corrected it, or we give him?
Well, with his, I think his corrections need be, because he did ask that. He did ask that on record.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion approved. Presentation of Mayor's Budget Message, previously distributed.
Motion.
This budget message of the year June 2013, July 2013 to June 2014, presented from my desk to the city council, citizens, and employees. The introduction is Kentucky Revised Statute 91A.030, sets forth the requirements and guidelines for budget preparation and management in cities in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. The following budget message and operating budget proposal is presented to you in the format recommended by these statutes. Goals: The city of Millsboro 2013-14 budget was prepared with the goal of continuing to provide government operations at customary levels in the area of public safety, street maintenance, park maintenance, sanitation, and wastewater treatment services. The budget also allows for continued function of administrative and legislative duties. These objectives will be reached through traditional methods that have served the city in the past, along with updated technology designed to provide efficient means of tracking revenues and spending. The city's revenue sources include direct taxation, fee collection from enterprise funds such as sewer, ambulance, and sanitation, along with other governmental sources such as municipal road aid, local government economic assistance, and co-servants funds. The improved management software the city has installed in the assistance of our financial consultants has proven their worth thus far. We are better able to monitor income and expenditures, and as our experience with these new tools increases, I believe we will see further improvements. These practices will assist with our unchanging goal of improving the services we provide to community. The 2013-14 budget contains several items of importance in addition to appropriations for regular salary, utilities, insurance, and other routine expenditures. The spending is supplemented by the purchase of vehicles and the police and street department, and field equipment for all departments. As a facet of our continued focus on condemned building removals, spending in this area is proposed to increase this year. We plan to continue support for revitalization and beautification efforts downtown, and have allocated funds for the main street director again this year. The budget includes full funding and health insurance program for employees, and continued participation in the state retirement system. Last year, I stated unequivocally that I intended to provide the city employees with a pay raise. The budget contains increased funding for this purpose. It is, in my opinion, most important feature in this budget. They have been five years without a raise, and it made it that important. Proposed changes in goals, programs, and appropriations. The proposed budget contains no significant changes in goals or administration. Appropriation levels for many routine items have remained the same or have not changed to any large degree. The most significant changes have been in the area of salaries and related payroll costs and health insurance. Retirement rates have actually decreased slightly this year for both hazardous and non-hazardous employees, 1.9% and 0.66%, respectively. Due to planned pay raises and additional employees in police department, there is still an overall increase in spending for these categories. According to Department of Energy projections, per gallon fuel cost for both gasoline and diesel will be lower than current level, and this is reflected in the proposed spending levels. Last year, plans for converting our ambulance service to advanced life support paramedic status was discussed. As you remember, it's uncertain how long the process will take. We do expect to accomplish the change during this budget period, possibly as early as this fall. A planning committee has been working on the issue, and we expect to be making applications for required licenses and certifications soon. As part of the process, we will be required to purchase the remaining equipment and supplies for licensing inspections, etc. Since I wish to submit the most accurate estimate possible of these costs, ALS expenditures are not in the proposed budget. I will update members of the council as these plans progress, and will submit a budget amendment that will include both equipment and personnel costs, along with updated revenue estimates. In last year's message, there was discussion of a problem related to certain hazardous duty employees. These employees were not properly classified due to a change in retirement system several years ago that required cities to reapply for this coverage to apply to the positions. This application has been submitted and will be examined by the Board of Directors on May 30. Based on communication with retirement system personnel, there is no reason to believe the application will be denied. However, if necessary, we will resubmit any required corrections until the problem is resolved in favor of our hazardous duty employees. In light of this, there may be additional costs associated with obtaining proper credit for service, the, for service that affected police officers and firefighters have already rendered. This is also not reflected in the budget request. I will keep the council informed as matters progress and submit the necessary requests for additional funds at the appropriate time. We have learned since we threw email that they have been accepted, they have accepted this. This was done prior to that information. Fiscal policy. After a careful review of past budgets and financial records, there appears to be no need to make many, make any overall changes in fiscal policy. The budget is proposed in same format as in previous years. Occasionally, management and/or operation practices are retired to be, are required to be adjusted in order to remain in compliance with financial reporting standards, and that's the gasping we hear about. But no significant changes are expected in the coming year. The administration has focused on strict enforcement of collection procedures to ensure that no taxpayer is forced to pay more than his or hers a fair share. As always, as has always been our practice, we will adhere to procurement procedures as governed by city ordinance and Kentucky Revised Statute. Conclusion. The proposed 2013-2014 city budget provides for continuation of all city services at same levels that our community is accustomed to. We will upgrade vehicles and equipment as necessary to maintain these services, and will continue to provide our employees with the best working environment possible. To this end, I'm proposing that city continues to provide health insurance to all full-time employees, and have budgeted a 10% increase in these costs. As discussed previously, I'm proposing that city employees receive a pay raise. It is important to note that employees have not had a pay raise over the annual longevity increases since Jan-, July 2008. Although the depressed economy our nation has suffered over that period has resulted in slow growth in the cost of living, our workers still have suffered a net loss in the purchasing power of their salary of around 4% to 5% based on Consumer Price Index data. We have carefully computed an amount for across-the-board salary increases that I believe will restore the loss the employees have suffered, and most importantly, that can be sustained over time. I am proposing that the pay raise be granted in the form of $1,500 annual increase in base pay for each employee. Upon implementation, the amount will be converted to an hourly rate for each employee and add to his or her base rate permanently. Plans are to continue both our support for projects aimed at rebuilding our downtown area and revitalization of neighborhoods in other areas in the city. I have increased the condemned house disposal budget by 50% this year. In the downtown area, we will continue our work with Discover Downtown Millsboro. The organization's dedicated volunteers and our street department have collaborated on several projects in previous years, and this will continue. In addition to co-servants funding awarded, DDM pursues many other grant opportunities, and our support will be required. DDM has recently inquired what many of us know as the old hospital building on Cumberland Avenue. Our making ambitious plans at restoring this historical building. The city council has already indicated support for this project by voting to sponsor the first grant application for planning and cleanup at the building. In examining our overall financial status, I believe that we are in a stronger position than we were at this time last year. Our cash position has improved from last year, and our collection rates appear to be higher. As always, there is room for improvement. Although our financial position has improved, we must remain cautious. Our region is still economically depressed, and while city revenues are growing, the rate of growth is not optimal for long-term sufficiency should the economy move to inflationary period. Also, certain expense categories, retirement rates, health insurance, and energy costs, have been volatile in the recent years, and are items we have little or no control of. However, considering all the relevant factors, I am satisfied that city can continue providing a high level of service in the community, thanks the community has become accustomed to while preserving adequate resources for the future. The mayor's 2013-2014 budget proposal is tendered to the city council for review and consideration, and provides for all anticipated cost of operating Millsboro city government for coming fiscal year. I hope that you will give it your full consideration, concur, and be prepared to take official action at the next scheduled council meeting so that we may adopt a budget by statutory deadline of June 30th, 2013. Respectfully, City Millsboro's Mayor Bill Hill. Thank you. And that is all ready.
How about that, man? I think that's a very good budget. I was very well pleased with the 57 increase on the condemned houses being torn down, and going up in the strong, pitching this on the city to do tonight, and the pay rates for city employees, and thank you for that. Just one comment, that's a very good budget.
Well, I want you to understand, it's because of city employees that we are acting right what we do, and that's the big thing. I want to thank them. That letter was actually accepted two weeks ago into the minute, so it doesn't have to be denied, so we can move on. Number eight. Consideration of an ordinance amending the city of Millsboro, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, second reading.
An ordinance amending the city of Millsboro, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Whereas circumstances sometimes require that the city's annual operating budget be amended to reflect changes in current income and expenditure levels, and whereas the mayor has determined that sufficient cause exists to amend the annual operating budget, and whereas the legislative body has reviewed the requested amendments and concerns, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Millsboro, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the annual budget for fiscal year began in 7/1/12 and ending 6/30/2013 is hereby adopted as follows. General Fund, intergovernmental revenue and interest, $320,050. Sewer Fund, service charges and interest, $1,300,000. Sewer Fund, grant income, $375,000. Total revenues and cash, general fund, $5,767,500. And total sewer revenues and cash, $1,850,000. Total revenue of funds, $9,963,050. Expenditures, general fund, street department, $610,750. Sewer, $1,835,050. Total expenditures, general fund, $5,764,500. Sewer Fund, $1,835,050. Total expenditures, all funds, $9,906,000. Balance of all funds, $57,050. Section 2, the detailed operating budget as amended is adopted by reference for administrative and accounting purposes. Section 3, this ordinance shall be published in Millsboro Daily News by title and summary within 30 days after its adoption.
We do need a motion, second.
Make a motion.
Second. Now, discussion, yes, sir.
Um, I know last week at the finance committee, we walked through the last year's budget and expenditure, but one request I have, I don't know when we can do that, but after we close out all the counts, can we get the same report, see where we finished? I know there was still bills coming in and stuff like that, I know.
We, we need to wait till the end of July, because what happens, we pay some in July, that has to be backed up in the June because of-
Right, I understand. We sit there, and I'd like to see, you know, what we need to know, because I know we walked through that last week.
Any others? If you need a roll, please.
Philip Ball.
Aye.
Kevin Gordon.
Aye.
Lucas Corrigan.
Aye.
Ronnie Corrigan.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Doc Maseville.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Is this seven or eight? I want to make sure I know where I am.
Right.
I think at the last regular meeting, we said that the warning sirens were going to be a high priority, but I don't see them on the ballot.
I actually told you, two years ago, I brought them up, and you made a motion for us not to try to look for them. I still have, yes, sir, and I go back in records. But anyway, I can still look for them. I have a gentleman working on a plan, and that's what I told you. He'd actually laid out sections of town.
I think you said you already had the plan laid out.
He does. He has that part laid out. I can't just go by them, but I do want to move forward in looking at them. We've got money involved here, Gary, that we can't. But as I say, two years ago, I brought this same subject up, and you made a motion that we not, that you ought to rather spend a few hundred dollars on the horn down here at the station that just lasted a few months.
Let's stop that measure.
But, but you did want us to proceed, then, Gary.
And that doesn't work.
I know it doesn't. Yeah, I explained that then, too.
Could I make a suggestion, please?
Yes, sir. Just men, not white men. We still need a vote, Gary.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm the last one to vote. This is a $9 million budget.
This is an amendment.
Is this the amendment?
Budgeting last year's amendment, last year's budget, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll go along with the amendments. Aye.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just on the subject of the, of the warning sirens, speaking as the department most directly impacted by that entire issue, I would like to suggest that whatever committee, be responsible for that, I would assume, say, to have a meeting and, and let's talk about that. There are some things I'd like to say to that committee, on that person.
And we've had that discussion, because there are some liabilities both ways, and we need to look at it. I think that would be best under maybe a combined finance and safety and community development, all, yeah.
Safety.
Safety, okay, you do it under both of them. Okay. Yeah. When we get down there, let me ask you that, thanks. Number nine, please.
An ordinance adopting the city of Millsboro, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2013, June 30, 2014. Whereas an annual budget proposed and messaged has been shared with the legislative body, and whereas the legislative body has reviewed such budget proposals, and modifications have been made accordingly, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Millsboro, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the annual budget for fiscal year began 7/1/2013 and ending 6/30/2014 is hereby adopted as follows. General Fund, revenues, $5,915,300. MRA, $360,845. LGEA Fund, $240,250. Co-servants, $170,000. Ambulance Fund, $1,100,000. Sewer Fund, $1,700,000. Sanitation Fund, $405,000. Total revenues, all funds, $9,847,345. Expenditures, general fund, $5,904,000. MRA, $309,000. LGDA Fund, $235,500. Co-servants Fund, $165,000. Ambulance Fund, $1,88,150. Sewer Fund, $1,671,000. Sanitation Fund, $390,500. Total expenditures, all funds, $9,763,300. Balance of all funds, $84,450. Section 2, the budget ordinance shall be administered by the executive authority as prescribed and set forth in Kentucky Revised Statutes. Administration shall include but not be limited to at least the following. Preparation and submission of financial statements that include budgetary comparisons on not less than monthly basis. Provide for budget amendments if requested by the legislative body or anticipated through amplification. Preparing financial statements required for publication purposes pursuant to KRS 424 of 91A. Encourage each fund of this budget to be audited as described by law. Section 3, the detailed operating budget attached is adopted by reference for administration and accounting purposes. Section 4, this ordinance shall be published in Millsboro Daily News by title and summary within 30 days after adoption.
Thank you. And now, a motion, or a second.
I'm making a motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call one.
Philip Ball.
Aye.
Kevin Gordon.
Aye.
Lucas Corrigan.
Aye.
Ronnie Corrigan.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Doc Maseville.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Well, due to the lack of complete information to my satisfaction, with a $9 million budget, let's vote on it. We're done with it for the next year, I'll have to vote on it.
Can I add one?
Yes, sir.
Just so everybody does realize that last week, I know you couldn't be there, I'm not saying you should have been there, but last week at the finance committee meeting, we spent about an hour, and I'm sure- And I'm sure Philip will report on it, but we did go through the budget for an hour, just so everybody understands that we did this in subcommittee and we asked a bunch of questions.
An hour? This is, wow.
Number ten, uh, please, number ten. Oh, eight, eight, three of points.
Hard to say to read? Approval of mayor's report, Mr. Boardamazing appeals to your terms. Teresa Williams terms to expire four thirty-two fifteen and Patricia Stanley terms to expire four thirty-two fifteen.
I vote second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Hearing none, motion through. Committee reports, street. Sewer.
No, four.
And there is one, uh, Lucas, they have started trying to get that twentieth street where you'd asked about the drop of the road. They were working on it. No, I meant to tell you earlier, yeah, yeah, I meant to tell you earlier about that.
Are they threw up on Black and White?
Yes. Well, no, they're not threw, they still got blacktop cleaning up, things like that.
They're gonna fix that road back.
Yeah, yeah.
Really got some bad shit going on.
Yeah, they're gonna fix everything back and clean up. They've got that part still.
The new road, we just put in a new blacktop and it's been a story like that. You gotta do what you gotta do.
Well, that's where we.
That's where we play back by the concrete.
Once he, once he came, then he found out there's a lot of sewer problems in that area. Finance.
Uh, yes, we did beat last week and we went over several different things. And I wouldn't mention one thing about the retirement. Uh, a lot of people don't realize how much money is going out from states, oh, all governments. And, uh, budgeting is very critical in all phases of government, city, county, state, as well as federal government, several states and communities. All of their funds have just about been paid out to the point where they're almost facing bankruptcy. So it is very important. And we need to make sure that our people have retirement replaced, paid for. And that is a very important part of the, the finance, part of the budget. And, uh, I know that served as a side to what we did last week, but I did want to mention from last week. We did discuss the five hundred and fifty dollar raise per person, per employee. And we were very happy that, that was put in there, that they were receiving that raise. It was, uh, needed and long overdue. And next thing we talked about was Sandy had worked with the C P As and the monthly printouts will be more accurate on the salaries in their monthly reports and things. And, uh, we walked through the budget and had explanation of budget versus revenues. And also discussed the raising of the budget on condemned houses by forty to fifty percent. And we were very happy about that. Because as the mayor explained well a few minutes ago, that's very important to keep our city looking like we're improving and bettering ourselves by getting rid of these ice stores. Let's just unoccupied, rundown, just left behind. So unless someone else has something, that's all I have for finance.
One I would like to add to that, Phil, if you brought up our critical retirement system. If you get a chance to see one of your state legislators or anybody, thank him a little bit. They've worked hard on trying to figure out some kind of way of doing this. And they changed the retirement system, I think, two or three times over the past six years. Not everybody agrees with it, but you've got to make it into a plan that's going to be sufficient and work. And that's what they're working towards. We couldn't keep going in the direction we were, or the state retirement system would be busted in ten to twelve years. And, and that was their goal was to do. So if you get a chance, I would thank any of them if you get a chance. And that's Sandra Brandon's fan from Representative Rick Nelson's blog. Anyone else on finance? Personnel, Doug.
Well, we had a meeting, one with the finance committee meeting, that Council Green explained to you, we discussed a couple items.
Um, first thing we talked about was, uh, whether the fire department was shorthanded and whether we needed to hire some additional firemen, I think for firefighters, excuse me. And I think there was a discussion about waiting for, I think you can clarify that better, Mike.
Well, we've actually gone ahead right now and advertised for some A and Ts. But we didn't want to fill all spots, because we wanted to look at bringing some paramedics on board also. But we have already advertised, we were just waiting on it to hit the newspaper. And I want to thank the Daily News, wasn't it, and I want to thank the Daily News while I've got opportunity.
And then following up on that discussion, we actually asked a question about the overtime policy.
Yes, sir.
About how firemen had overtime, and then all departments across that, whether we had one or not, I think we discussed that. Fire, firefighters have an over built-in policy.
Yes.
It's pretty standard. Um, we also went over and made sure that the air evac benefit that we approved was going into the next budget and that was, that was correct. And then we also revisited that the department head should attend all the meetings. And we wanted to make sure that they were reminded of that, so.
When two of them tonight did call, tell me they could, uh, that's Mr. Tim Wilder and Mr. Tim Gent. They both called to let me know they could. And Mr. Michael Boyd has let me know he might have to go because of some high water out there. Anyone else not here?
Also, yes, Mayor. That's why I was gonna say, we've got some department heads pretty low.
I think we got one that's not here, so.
What, what's the next action, Mayor? What's the next action take on that? Because I mean, it's like we're repeating, it's like he just, he's really with them.
Let's, let's talk a minute, let's talk a minute on that. You're getting into a personnel thing.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you're.
Should we go to executive session?
If you want. I mean, I can on that if you all want to. That's your option. But I think on personnel, we need to go into an executive session. If you want to discuss it.
I don't know, should we go to executive session?
After me, not after me.
No, not after me. You can't do it after me.
Right now, I'll, I'll.
Yeah. We either have to do it now, because we have to go back. Yeah, well, you have to come back. We can do it after safety, I think is what he asked. Okay, okay. We'll bring up the motion again at that time, Mr. Carter. Anyone else in personnel? Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, we met, uh, last Tuesday on the Fourth of July celebration, everything's a go. All our vendors from last year are back on board. It's gonna start, uh, July fourth on Thursday, I think around twelve o'clock. Have hot dogs and ice cream and everything. I said, we're gonna have music and fireworks for all that night after dark. So everything's on board for Fourth of July celebration.
Kevin, we've got to ask, you gonna sing?
No.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Excellent Kevin. Yeah, Kevin Gordon.
Be easy now, you might have prostate, let's be easy here.
That'd be a lot better choice.
Anyone else on Parks and Recreation, yes sir?
I got the thing.
Okay, go ahead. Glad I got Mr. Carter here, go ahead.
We discussed putting up the sign out in Fordwood Mark, the coverage, parking lot area. Do we need a vote to put this sign up?
No, no, they're already ordered. Well, it, it, it might not say no gangs, no groups and, uh, I forget exactly how he's worded it, but no groups can actually. Come together and stand in the parking lot, block the parking lot stuff. Because if you just say gangs, then they're all standing there, then you've got another problem and another. So I think groups is what we need to, yeah. Chief, I'm gonna ask you two to get with Mr. Jen tomorrow and make sure he is ordering, he is ordering that sign correctly. For the park out there to give us authority, be able to run any group off that parking lot that's meeting in groups, playing games in the middle of it and things like that. We had a discussion the other night, which you were here, about some of them playing, I think cornhole. Yeah, and I wouldn't want my wife or children in that thing. But if you get with him, he's, he's got a hold of his S T A about getting one ready. But if you get a hold of him to make sure it's worded correctly, I'd appreciate it. Or where we can legally enforce, I guess, would be the correct, um. Yes, sir, Mr. Green, you had a.
Oh, I was just gonna, about the sand at the volleyball courts, where we can look in to do something that keeps the week down.
We were at Fordwood's, I didn't know the other one had already. We were at Fordwood's with Tim yesterday. I was talking to him about the new swing set. And I mentioned to him to get that one cleared out. So which others did you say?
Lincoln Park.
Had it full of sand earlier in the spring and it's just the grass growing back up there.
He's got some good madding. It might be the next trip we need to dig it on, so the madding on, we go from there. Okay, I'll have a discussion with him. Anyone else on Parks and Recreation? Community development, please.
Um, yeah, before the meeting, I, I talked to you about the fire, both the fire department.
Yes, sir.
Without the lights that are, with, with lights that are above surface.
Okay.
And it's about fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. So I think you said it was in the meeting of the budget to do that, so. And then, um, on the yard sales downtown, I've had a lot of complaints about yard sales as a growing issue. And so I've actually contacted the League of Cities and the city attorney about maybe developing some kind of ordinance that either governs or limits the yard sales that are downtown.
And, and there is some issue over when they're back on private property and not. And we're asking some landowners if they want them off to please post no ordering and things like that, because we had to do that. Villan Square Mall, wasn't it, Chief, where they had two years ago, put the signs up, or we couldn't, if we cited them, the judge would not accept it unless it was posted and different things like that. So we've talked to property owners downtown about that also.
I was just looking at limiting on, you know, in the historic district.
I think state's got a two-time limit and some things like that in their statute. We were looking it up. But as far as us having anything else more, not really. And I think what happens in the past, it just never was taken up and anything actually worked out.
I mean, I haven't been thinking short, it's just getting to be a wall or staying downtown, it's kind of, kind of a police thing.
Put a yard sale, yard sale, your house, we out there, I don't see anybody coming forward to call us, they're all on themselves.
And I understand that too, but all of you remember one thing, is this the next thing gonna come up? Be easy on you, but if a church is gonna ask them, can they put a yard sale up there for a fundraiser and everybody's gonna come to me and say, wait a minute, Mayor? You know, so let's be careful and study this process to look.
Well, they've sent me some other ordinance in some other cities, so I thought I'd bring them here.
Okay, okay.
Another meeting, we go over.
I appreciate it.
The community development meeting.
Okay, appreciate it.
And then, uh, last thing I have is the historical district commission will meet July first, five thirty, and that's at City Hall. And that's, oh, and we do have another community development meeting next month, July ninth.
Okay.
And I guess it's a regular scheduled finance, safety, and community development. I'd like to call it community development. We'll discuss the website at that point. Like I said, I emailed them. And I emailed the website people today to kind of get some kind of setup for my, for spill the ball.
Yeah, we got to have that before we can drop the other one. That's the critical one.
I can do that. Historical district is July first, five thirty, and that's at City Hall.
And then safety, community development, and what else?
Finance, July ninth.
Anyone else, Parks and Recreation? Safety.
Other than safety is the added day paper and appetite for employees, board departments. Uh, and we would discuss the warning signals in the safety committee on July ninth. If we do anything, we can.
Anyone else? Hearing none, before entertaining your motions or ask public. Mr. Carter, do you have a motion you'd like to reiterate?
That we go to executive session, discuss the personnel.
To discuss personnel, uh, department heads not being in meetings, correct? Is that fine? Got a second. All in favor? All opposed. Hearing none. We will, uh, uh. Let's, let's step into a week in back. We need a motion in a second. We, we got, you got first hand a second? Okay. Mr. Green first and Mr. Art Carter second. All in favor? All opposed. Hearing none, we're back in session. For Republican all, we went into executive session to discuss department heads being here as was asked by the council. And actually as was requested by the mayor to each department head. And we, no action was taken. At this time, we're in session, we'll open to the public. Seeing none, uh, just kidding, come ahead, sir. And you know you're welcome, so.
Well, first of all, my name is Francis and you know my pastor, Bishop Joseph Glover, man. First, I have a question. It was Saturday, June fifteenth, we was at a car wash, was having a car wash, and behind the church, they had a bulldozer behind there. So was that the city doing it, or was it, was her doing it?
Private owner right now. They have told us they were going to remove it. We have not removed the dates yet until it's proven that they will remove it. But they have told us, we'd save their money and that is, are their rights by law, okay? Once we give them dates, they are allowed to remove it up till a certain date.
And the strange thing about it, they was working during the day with the bulldozer. And at nighttime, it was a fire behind the church. So, and then the fire truck came, then ambulance came, and then the next morning, Sunday morning service, the bulldozer back out there. So are they in completion of this project? Are they still working on it, or?
Their dates aren't up yet on the first time. So they still got a little bit of time to finish that. I haven't got the dates in front of me, because I didn't think about you being here tonight, and I apologize on that. If you want to come down during the day, I can actually get you their completion dates on each. But they do have till then to clean it up, all the way down to foundation, okay? And then they have to have that lot cleaned up right there. Once they do, they, they meet their obligation at that time. If they don't, then is when the city can go in and start doing the project.
It's starting to look good, but also the other project about the parking lot. So when they want to start on that project about?
About fixing what the damage of the excavator was. We, we, we will have to take the contractor over, do the blacktop. And I'll let him, Mr. Jen, look at it. If Mr. Jen feels like we can do it as a city in a satisfactory way, we will handle it. If not, we're gonna have to let the contractor, as he's doing another road or two of ours. Because it's not really a large enough project to bring him directly to it. But I'm afraid we might not be able to patch it satisfactory, because we don't have that type of equipment to really kill a lot of. We can do a whole mountings and stuff, or where that was in various locations. It, it might need to have a roller and a, and a piece of equipment to actually lay it out and roll it and stuff. Yes.
And was listening to the, like, Forest Woods and what, Lincoln? They all have good, you know, they have good things out there for the kids, you know, to play on and stuff. But on South Twentieth Street, you have a lot of kids there. All you have is some swings, they about ready to fall down. And you got a couple monkey bars there and, and the, but their track looks good, but they need something like, you know, they can get up, climb on, like the rest of them, like.
And, and I understand that, and I hope in the future we can. That track costs more than all the equipment that we actually put. So we've got to prioritize in our boundaries of what we have budget-wise to make it. That is a priority of ours, it. And the one at, uh, West End, both are quite a bit farther behind in some toys and things, but we are looking at that. But once that was put there, that was sort of part of that budget and then the other up here. And we do have to prioritize it. As you know, managing your church, you'd like to redo the whole thing, but you've got to do it part of the time.
That's right. And what about the parking down there? It's summertime, school's out and it's packed down there and it's still on the same old, you can't get in and out.
Well, I can say this, I know from speaking to one lieutenant and speaking to the chief, I do know patrols are up down there. I do know they're gonna remain up down there. And hopefully part of that will curb part of the parking problem. If we look at a parking lot, we're right back to the same thing. We have to prioritize it and look at it into our budget to where it's effectively and efficiently done. So I'm not saying we not, I'm just saying time, you know, time the good Lord leaves that way.
May I ask you a question? Did you say something about, um, the dozer was running during her Sunday services?
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Because, um, we was in Sunday school, you know, we was in Sunday school and happened to hear some noise behind the churches. I opened the door and I was looking at it, the bulldozer, you know, back there just, you know, bulldozing up and everything. I said, well, that's sort of strange, first bulldoze on Saturday, fire by night, bulldoze the next day, you know.
I, I can say we can ask them, would they consider during them hours? I, I can say we can ask them, would they consider during them hours not? I'm not sure there's anything in the ordinance anywhere that would cover certain hours of the day, you know, different.
That's just being respectful.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can ask them. We can ask them, but I'm not sure I can force them not to. And if they're cleaning it up, I don't know, I'd, I'd like to see them get it cleaned, I really would. I think it would help your property and all that area up there.
And the pastor, thank you all for your cooperation and your patience and... There's, there's still a lot need to be done, you know, if we're gonna beautify the street and everything, let's beautify the neighborhood and all because, you know, you still got trees down there, borders, it's like going through a tunnel of trees, you know? If a storm was to come and light hitting something like that, boom.
And I understand that, but we are real careful too about cutting vibrant trees because the forest tree works with us closely. That's why the ones we removed at the park and others, we like them to mark what's dead, what's bad, and we would rather concentrate on them. Because most of the time, if lightning hits, there's not a lot we can save. But most time on wind and all, it's a dead tree or a dead element. And that's what we try to do, if we have forest tree work with us.
And, and thank you all for putting that light up over that shed in there, because where it's been real dark and stuff, it's been a lot of activities going on down there. But that light sort of illuminate a lot of, you know, and thank you for that light.
And again, we ask you to help us control that park, and we'll help you make it more enjoyable.
Thank you all, have a best day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. And before you start, I do want to thank you, the letter was sent from Tourism for a city of Middlesbrough and them to partner in this adventure. So that, that allows us to where now it's covered under the umbrella of city's insurance. Tom, I do appreciate you on that.
Just give you, I just wanna give you a quick update on the wall. I gave you the wrong date to start off with, apparently. The wall will actually be here August first, nine, twenty-nine and eleven. So what we're gonna do is, we'll have all the, everything taken care of, the landscaping, the timber, they've all been, just about everything been given to us, I've not asked, they volunteered and I'll excel.
And it's Thursday morning, correct?
It's Thursday morning, August first.
Okay.
So we'll have all the landscape, and we'll have our form built, and we'll have everything at temporary stage.
Did you say, has it changed from August first to August the fifth?
August first to the fifth. We thought it was gonna be here the thirty-first, and we could set it up the thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
But they'll be in town the night of the thirty-first. And we'll have to get everybody, just what we have left to do, just put the panels up on the wall. Anybody wants to come down, help put the panels up, you're welcome. Uh, the opening ceremony will be that night at seven. I've had six states and paper yards wants to help escort the wall from the Holiday Inn Express to the parking lot, so I'll have to get the chief to escort and help, help with escort.
Mr. White, are you saying it'll be open from the second to the fifth?
No, the first, three, three.
People can come by on the first? I thought that's what you had already said.
No, the, the wall will, we, the wall will come at nine o'clock on first. We will have an opening ceremony at seven o'clock that night. If anybody wants to come while we're putting it up.
So it starts at seven at night?
We'll have a seven at night opening ceremony. Uh, we got the paper yards coming, made of wood. Uh, when the wall does arrive, we'll have everything in place except the bolt of the wall down. We've had several people, I was going through who else, uh, office and stuff. Woods was gonna ask, and I, and one of the veterans, we've been meeting every Thursday night, and one of them had asked if maybe you and Abby Brock could make a proclamation for that be, August first, being Vietnam veterans day, if the wall's coming in.
I think.
Something like that. Uh, the walls, the tent, temporary stage, info tent, visitor tent, bleachers, all that's been mapped out. We've done it three different ways. And I brought the Vietnam veterans that's been involved in it to let them pick which way they want it. And I think they picked the way. But it was kind of a...
How much more things on that parking lot, can we see which way to go better, Mike? I'm just kidding, you said to one of them.
You know, I'm fighting with a fan on there, I'm about to turn big on her.
No, you can't, nothing, nah.
But if you do that, one other thing I'd like to ask, ask the mayor to do, on the opening night at Thursday night, from about five o'clock to the, to the ceremony is over, if we can close Laughberry at the post office and the bridge just long enough so people can stand in the road and, and have a place to stand in, if we can take a way out on that night.
And, and for people know the parking lot's gonna be shut the whole time. But we are letting traffic down Laughberry during that time and all. But the parking lot itself will be shut down. And we've left the little park and bridge to the opening of the parking lot, we're gonna leave a way there because of emergencies.
We can let our school buses come in and...
First of the month.
I know.
We got a lot of traffic coming into City Hall.
Well, Laughberry will be open, you know, except for, like, say, five o'clock till it's over. And we're closed, but then the post office will be, so I think that works well, Mike.
If need be, we've got some churches that volunteer their van, they'll run there thirty minutes, like, from, uh, different parking lots, if, if need be. And we're just bringing them through here and let them out on this end. But, uh, handicap only, and if the school buses, we got a couple of schools that's already asked, most schools won't be in. But, uh, I've got my shift set up, got the volunteers, the shift's gonna be for, for my volunteers to be eight to twelve, twelve to four, and fourteen, I don't think we'll need many after ten o'clock. But I'll be going around all the businesses and you all, and you can pull an hour shift, a two-hour shift, or... I'll be slotting in places, so if you wanna be a volunteer, uh, don't comment as late as I'm leaving. But I'll get in weeds and I'll slot you in wherever best, best I can. And, but otherwise, everything is hunky-dory, it's ready to go. I believe that from, from everything I found out, from everything I looked on internet, there were like twelve, fifteen thousand people in here that week.
We sure think all the people have done this.
I'd say there'd be more than that.
It's an incredible thing for here.
But that, that, your restaurant owners and your people, kind of helping through the winter, so they can get some money going. So they get some money going, and, uh, like I said, we've got paper garden, six states already want them to help escort.
Mike, I want to thank you for your involvement in this, putting this together, I think it's great for the community and the three dollars you've invested in time you put into it. And your request, as far as closing streets, I know I spoke to the council, I think Chief Sharp writes it down, so he'll, he'll take care of that for you. Right there.
Yeah.
Take care of the streets, hold them.
Oh, yes, sir. The, the one thing we ask, Mike, and we've asked all the others, is weeks prior for you to sit with the fire chief, with the police chief, and everybody else to put that together.
So does anybody's looking to him, I got the, the, uh, rescue squad gonna help with the...
Yeah, okay.
With emergency stuff like that. Uh, but the only reason I did it was for...
But Kevin Gordon liked him too, I know he is.
Kevin's, Kevin don't know if the...
He's volunteer too?
I worked, I worked the boys home for twenty-three years. Every Thursday night, uh, your boys will have to pick up your action, you know?
Probably can.
The whole crew, you know?
And we'll work Kevin with you to have a location or two. What's that dumpster? We'll work with you, have extra dumpster or two out away, where we can take care of things.
And that board party's a stud.
That's what I'm gonna get with mayor in two weeks, and we're gonna sit down and, uh...
Try to figure out how many, any of those locations, things like that.
Because that's gonna be important.
He, yeah, he is, and he's brought that up, and that's something we've got to work through all the particular.
I just, I've got everyone else.
Location, location, location.
Very important on that.
Get them away from the...
I've got, I've got another dug in the man here, he won't keep the stuff. Y'all won't volunteer? I bet you won't put in volunteers down, so if you need shit, bro.
Count me in, I'm looking forward to it.
We appreciate it, Mike.
But everything's going real good.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Angela Jackson, I'm a voter, a taxpayer, a property owner, citizen of Middlesbrough. And I have a request, but first I want to commend you on your energy saving. No air conditioning, I know that Doug Hughes is suffering and I'm perspiring like a lady of the evening in church.
With that being said, I'd say our clerk and everyone else in each of these other offices has been dealing with it a couple weeks. Uh, if we don't see the humor right now, forgive us, okay?
Uh, I have a request, and, uh, you be very patient with me. I want to recite my reasons for this request, and I hope to be very respectful. And, um, of course, there's no way to be really nice about it, but I want to request that the council might ask the Chief Jeff Sharp to resign. And I have my reasons here, if I may, you decide.
I believe you do have leeway to speak.
Okay.
I'm saying if this falls to it, council, one thing I might ask each person here, we cannot be part of the discussion. So keep at it, it's personnel, we cannot be part of this discussion, speaking. You're back to personnel again, okay?
May I start?
Yes.
The first reason, and I think it's very important, I don't believe our present police chief feels any empathy for problems the average citizen may face daily with crime and drugs. As far as I can see, our police chief does know community outreach personally, on a personal level. And I know of very few community outreach programs that have been implemented during his lengthy tenures. And that's what the NIS. Community outreach is very important when you're dealing with crime, drugs and poverty. I believe there should be zero tolerance in and around our city limits and inside of our city, in sight, that's sight, S-I-G-H-T, of our city limits concerning crack and meth. Instead of what I feel is the present attitude, don't ask and don't tell. Vandalism is rampant, petty thefts plague citizens, and I personally was told there is nothing the police can do about. Maybe new leadership would enable our police officers to try harder. The crack and meth business in Middlesbrough is becoming prevalent and sophisticated. There are dangerous outside involvements. Crack and meth users spread diseases among the populace, especially staph infections, hepatitis and AIDS. The citizens of Middlesbrough have been very, very good to our present police chief. Our present police chief retired years back, and we gave him a nice pension. Then after receiving his pension, Middlesbrough hired the chief back. Middlesbrough was so fond of Chief Sharp that they not only made him police chief, but also put him in charge of code enforcement and I believe finance director. How did that work out? Now it is time for our police chief to be good to Middlesbrough and retire. After all, he can't hear well, he has a bad back, as I understand it, his health problems are not job-connected, and now he's leaving. I believe in the next ten years, Middlesbrough will have rapid growth and may double in population. We need a police chief who can keep up with that growth and is able to help promote that growth through community outreach and zero tolerance of crack and meth in our city limits. So would the safety committee please consider applicants and the mayor consider asking our present police chief to resign? If he should refuse to resign, can we still replace him? Thank you, Angela Jackson.
We can't answer that correctly, but I think I would be amiss if I didn't add to this. As executive officer, I'm very proud of a lot of the work that our police department, fire department, street department, clerk's office, sewer department, and even a lot of what our code officers are doing. But with that being said, um, I think almost every day, we read the Middlesbrough paper. We see many, many officers have made many, many arrests. I think that speaks volumes for itself. With that, I can't answer correctly, but I will entertain motions for it, sir.
May I say one more thing?
I, I, I would think that Chief Sharp will kind of respond, that's up to him, that's his, you know, the newspaper here is tough, he wants to defend himself, I think he deserves equal time, if he don't, that's his position. I will add that to this meeting.
May I say one more thing?
Yes.
Uh, I, he's not a bad guy, he, he's a pretty good guy, but, you know, he has his limits like everybody else, and I think we've outgrown him. And, and community outreach is very, very important. And he, in my opinion, is just not good at it. And doesn't mean he's a bad person, it just means that we've outgrown him, and we, and he, we've been good to him, and now he should go on his way and let us have a new police chief. So with that, I will be quiet, and thank you very much.
Chief Sharp, I will ask if you'd like, I'd like to keep it professional as we can, and I'll be always.
I, I'm not gonna defend anybody except the men that work under me.
Speak up, Chair, please.
But I'm not up here to defend myself, I don't feel I have anything to defend myself against. But since the rest of my men are here to speak for themselves, and since they've been pretty well accused of not doing their job, I do want to say. And I don't, I don't even gotta ask you to take my word for it. Anybody who's interested needs to go over to the Bell County Court system, pull any records for any length of time you want to. And I want you to see what these men have been doing. What reported in the daily news, what they've actually been doing. I want you to go look and see about the drug charges that we've made on an ongoing basis, every year, year in, year out. I think you will find that we initiate more drug charges than every other agency in this county combined. Certainly isn't me. Take my word for it, go look, these men are out here working their hearts out. They're doing, they're going above and beyond every night. I know personally of several situations where men are out here literally risking their lives to work on this drug problem. Either day in, day out, every day, and they're doing it. The only other thing I'm gonna say...
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, 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 no, I've, I've been here thirty-two years. And I don't know if that's too long to suit certain people or not, but I feel I still got a little something to offer. I have, as, as every one of these policemen has, endured quite a bit. We have been shot at, and cut, and beat up, I've been spit on.
Several times.
I've been insulted in ways you cannot imagine. I've been threatened, time, time, time again, just like every man down there had. And for all that, I don't believe I've been as shaggly crewed as I was just five minutes ago. I, you know, you and I can disagree. You won't be gone, you won't be gone quite sometime, you may know something about it, and that's okay. We don't expect you to come up here and stand out here in an open council meeting and start talking about my health issue. I will stand for it. I'm ready to go, I'm ready to work, I am working. If anybody wants to know how much I'm working, ask Danny to stay after the meet and go down and pull my time sheet for the last seven, eight months and see how much I work.
Thank you, Chief. I will entertain the motions.
May I also say?
Oh, ma'am, we will entertain any other. You got a motion?
I have it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you.